All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the Monday, May 20th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. This evening for the invocation of pledge, we have Reverend Michael Williams of Moayak United Methodist Church here. Reverend, thank you for coming up this evening and joining us.
Thank you Chairman, thank you Committee, appreciate the opportunity. Let us pray. Loving God, we give thanks to you today for the incredible beauty of all of your amazing creation, for the family and friends in our lives that we cherish, and we're thankful to live in a community such as this, one where we try to live serving our neighbors, cherishing friendships, and working hard and trying to live on a firm foundation. We ask that you be with our Commissioners tonight, that where they have questions, you may offer guidance that lead to wholeness, that where there are doubts, that you offer reassurance that leads to teamwork. We pray for them and their decision-making, that the community recognizes that their work's difficult, and it's not always as easy as it may seem. We pray that when this meeting adjourns, that all may walk out confident in a good night's work, and that this community continues to grow and thrive under their leadership. We thank you for your guidance, direction, and presence in our community. Amen.
Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you again. All right, next up, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any items to change this evening?
I make a motion that we amend the agenda to put the County Manager's report after the Commissioner's report.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second it.
I'll second it. Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Public comment is next. I have no one signed up. There's a few people in the audience tonight. Would anyone like to speak to anything tonight on public comment? No? Okay, thank you all. Next up, Commissioner's report. A couple things. You'll notice tonight, we have the Assistant County Manager, Mr. Ben Stike Leather, sitting front and left of me. Ben's going to be our new County Manager in about five short weeks when Dan retires. If you guys want to pester Dan, he's in the back of the room, back there, you can heckle him a little bit. Ben's inheriting everything going forward, so you'll see Ben up here going forward as he will be our new County Manager. And so, we want to thank him for being our new County Manager, I guess, accepting the position, and we look forward to working with you over the coming years. This past week, myself, I met with the Tourism Advisory Board, and one of the things that we discussed, that I wanted to let the Board know and the public know, is moving Visit Currituck to Corolla. Changing the name over from Visit Currituck Outer Banks to Corolla, in some way, shape, form, or fashion. So, we're going to be working through that with the Tourism staff. As you all know, when Chandler came in, Chandler Thinks came in, he said that no one knows where Currituck Outer Banks is, but they do know where Corolla is, sort of. So, we're going to look at moving forward on advertising Corolla as Corolla. Not sure what that's going to look like yet, but we'll be working through that over the coming months for next year's advertising. We also talked to Chandler about coming back in and looking at marketing the mainland. What does that look like? What does that mean? What is everybody's idea of what Currituck mainland is? And so, we're going to be engaging with him to come back in after he's done his study of the Outer Banks portion of our county, to look at the mainland side and meeting with people, focus groups, and understanding how people here see the Currituck mainland. And then, we can work through that with the bridge coming in the next 10 years or so. How does that look for us from an advertising standpoint as a county? We have a great opportunity right now to invent ourselves, if you will, with the ballparks going in and the different things that we're doing with ecotourism, sports tourism, and any other avenues. It's a good time for us to figure out what we are as a brand, as a product, to get people here. So, we'll be looking at doing that in the very short future. Another thing we discussed was looking at events. As most of you know, we have an assistance program. It's about $2,000 if you're a nonprofit, for the first time you do an event, you fill out a form, we give you $2,000. The next year, it's a little less money and a little less money until you reach a plateau or basement of 500. During that timeframe, the thought is that maybe your event will grow. Well, we were talking about that as a Tourism Advisory Board, and decided that we should look at it from a county perspective, and we can pump a whole lot more money into these events. As we're talking about growing the mainland, these events are perfect places to do that. So, we do some of that already with the CCRC and the rodeos that we do there, and the barbecue, and other events. But, for instance, the Knott's Island Peach Festival. We have a nonprofit group that does that, that doesn't know much about advertising. But, we do as a Tourism Department. So, and thinking about that, how can we, as a Tourism Department, push that event, to grow that event, to truly bring people in from outside of the county, and make it something really good? They've been trying for years to grow it, and just don't have the wherewithal to do that. And so, we've talked about that, and we'll look at other projects here on the mainland as well. We need to work through that. It may be that some of these projects actually come to the Board of Commissioners, and we kind of look at the bigger ones that have broader-reaching implications and can draw people in. So, that's something we'll be playing with going forward, but you can expect to hear more of that in the future.
I think that's about all I have this evening. Commissioner Payman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing I'd like to say, for all the thousands and thousands of viewers that we have watching this live, is that I'd like to welcome my sister, who's sitting in the audience today. She's up from Atlanta, Georgia, sitting in the back row back there. So, I just wanted to thank her. She wanted to come witness to the Currituck County Commissioners Meeting. Had to embarrass her a little bit.
You're right, welcome. Mike, was she in the band?
No, she wasn't in the band here. My other brothers and sisters were there. She was not the one. Anyways, the second, I just want to remind everybody that Currituck Kids is having their annual Let Summer Begin event, June 1st, Saturday, which is going to be at the Currituck Barbecue. It's all for the kids of Currituck. It's free. They're going to have seafood, all you can eat, but for the kids, all sorts of activities. It's a nice thing that we do for the children of Currituck County with the nonprofit, Currituck Kids, which I'm a part of. But, please mark your calendars, June 1st, Saturday is coming up. It's going to be fun, good weather. I can see the forecast out there. So, spread the word, and I hope to see everybody out there. That's all I had for myself.
Thank you, sir.
It starts at 3:00, 3:00 PM.
Thank you. Ms. Kitty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, I attended our monthly meeting of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council here in Currituck, on which I serve. And after the meeting, I got thinking about the meeting, and I would like to just thank the people in our community who serve on this board. Folks, we have dedicated individuals who give their time and resources to help reduce and prevent juvenile crime in our area. They review the needs in the community. They find who's at risk, and then they find the resources to address the needs. They do this for their love of the young people and their love of Currituck County. So, again, I'd like to thank each one of them who serve, because they are who makes Currituck County a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bama?
Yes. There we go. Two things. One of them, for those that are watching and those that are here, as a follow-on from the ARPO, there is currently a passenger-only ferry that's now in operation to Ocracoke from Hatteras. And that is a temporary ferry. Evidently, the one that was under construction had significant structural issues and challenges. So, the temporary ferry will be with us for quite a while, apparently. And then, second of all, I had a chance to meet with our Ocean Rescue personnel that will be manning the stands, if you will, this Friday. And a very impressive group of motivated young folks. So, I challenged them to tie last year's record, which was no fatalities at the beach due to drowning. And I'm praying they're up to the task, because that was a monumental accomplishment. We hope to achieve the same this year. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner McCord?
Last week was National Law Enforcement Week, or Police Week. I just want to recognize, in Currituck, we do have, and we received a plaque on Sunday, they did. They rode through here for the Sunday, the, I don't want to get the date wrong. I believe it was the 11th. There was guys from Dare County and other counties that rode through, and they presented a plaque to our Chief Deputy, and a couple of the other guys were at the office. Watt Franklin Morgan was in the line of duty death here in Currituck County in 1967. To record, that's the only one that we have. So, it's not a bad thing. We don't want any more. Excuse me. Oh, man, I can't get my voice, hold on. But, yeah, I just wanted to recognize that. I don't know why my voice is messed up. But, line of duty death, 1967. He still has family here in Currituck. It happened in Moayak, at the Lazy Corner Bar. That's where I was actually getting here right on time. Did a little homework before I came in. But, there's a picture of him still, to this day, in the Sheriff's Office, at the Sheriff's Office, in the physical Sheriff himself's office. So, I just wanted to recognize that, and hopefully, we don't have another one. Another thing, traffic, starting this weekend, it's Memorial Day weekend. Traffic's going to heat up. Be careful. Don't text and drive. Wear your seatbelts. We had a couple of bad wrecks this weekend. The Lower Currituck Fire Department did a great job. I didn't see our Commissioner Payman out there. But, we had a couple of bad wrecks on the south end this weekend. But, the fire departments, as well as the dispatch and the law enforcement, everybody did a good job. So, like I said, just be careful, people. Slow down. Wear your seatbelts. Don't text and drive. Pretty much, that's it. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Arthur?
I'd like to piggyback on what Commissioner McCord brought up, and that's the traffic. I'd like to see us approach DOT and lower the speed limit through Moayak to 35. It says 45, and they drive 65 through there. And also, through Shawboro, it's 45. We have elderly people that come out of driveways, and people fly through there. And when I go to work in the morning from Moayak to Shawboro, I run 57, 58 miles an hour, and people blow by me. And speed, there was accident on the shortcut last Friday. There was one this morning between the guardrails where somebody on a straight stretch just ran right in the back of somebody. And I don't understand what's going on.
Too much of a rush, I guess. Everybody's got to be somewhere, their phones, and it used to be, it was just people putting on makeup in the mirror driving to work. You didn't have to deal with all that.
Well, when you see them putting the makeup on, talking on the telephone, driving with their knees, they're doing well. People, if you're going to be late, that late, leave home 15 minutes earlier.
Or just be late. Or just being late.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jarvis?
Thank you. I met this past week with the Northern Regional Advisory Board for Trillium, and it was a long meeting. We had a lot to discuss. One of the things we've discussed, and I've spoken with the Assistant County Managers, about developing a transportation plan agreement for each county. This is due by October 1st. But, the problem is, they haven't decided all the details about, like, who the examiners will be, and they probably won't have that done until September. So, it makes it difficult for counties to come up with a transportation agreement. We were warned that we would be talking about this at every meeting, probably for the rest of the year. They also talked at length about the Taylor Plan and the region's update for this Medicaid transformation. It's going to be complex. It's going to be confusing. And good for Currituck County, there are going to be guinea pigs that come before us. So, we'll be able to see, hopefully, and anticipate in our region, some of the problems from the Piedmont regions that are going to be rolling out in November. We're not slated until 2020. And this transformation, while it's a holistic approach to health care, the idea is that a person will get all of their care in one place, and hopefully, will make some of the issues that we currently have better. And our next meeting is in July, and we were told that some of the issues that are going to be facing Nash County, who's in our region, will be, hopefully, help us iron out. Even though they're not contiguous with our region, they will be able to be part of the Piedmont rollout, but we'll be able to model ours after that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening is our County Manager comments. Mr. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I want to say thank you to the Board and to the people of Currituck County for putting faith in me to be the next County Manager. It's not a responsibility that I take lightly. I come with a background, a varied background in local government, done a little bit of everything. And me and my family truly feel blessed to be part of this community, and I'm very lucky to have this opportunity here. So, I wanted to start by saying thank you to the seven of y'all and all of the folks who have elected y'all. I'm very excited about the position. Updates from the county. We've, one thing I wanted to point out, sometimes folks kind of wonder, with EMS and fire coverage that we have around the county, what do they do in the downtime? We do find uses for some of that staff. Today, we had some of those staff members installing signs in Carova to get ready for the beach parking that's coming up. So, just kind of an example of what those folks do, you know, when they're not on a call. Obviously, that's a job that they can leave and go to the call if they need to. But, just wanted to point out that they do stay busy. They find ways to stay active. I know that that's a concern that I've heard from some citizens. The Historic Boat Museum had a bid opening. We did not have enough bidders, so they're going to have to re-advertise that. And on Wednesday, we should have the final bid opening for that. So, we're hopeful that that'll move forward. Have had several conversations with DOT, and they have assured us at the RPO meeting that the work that is going on, the Coin Jock Bridge, while the traffic is one lane through the week, going into the weekends, they'll make sure that that traffic is opened up so that it doesn't impact the season traffic that we have here in the summertime. And the final update that I wanted to give, there's been some conversation in the public, I know, about the Moayak sewer plant. We are reaching a resolution on that, moving forward with our SOC. We've come up with a plan where the current plant that's up there struggles with a chemistry problem to be able to meet the limits. So, we went under a special order of consent for that plant. We are moving forward with a plan, once the state signs off on it, to bring a mobile sewer plant in, to be able to treat that sewage. That way, we can divert all flows to the mobile plant, get the current plant up and running, and get it back where it needs to be in order to make the limits. The plant's not failing, it's simply a chemistry problem with the design. So, moving forward, we're going to have the mobile plant there. As we fix the new plant, once the new plant's fixed, and back up to where it'll meet the limits, we'll keep the mobile plant there for a couple of months. And then, once we can prove out that the current plant can meet those limits, the mobile plant will be removed. But, that way, we should not have any more of an impediment to economic development in the Moayak community. So, just wanted to kind of put that out there for the Board and for the public that's had questions or concerns about that. So, and that's all I have this evening.
While we're on the subject of that, Mr. Stike Leather, I've had a couple of phone calls from constituents, and I'd like you to explain, their concern was that their sewage rates were going up.
Certainly.
And I know there was a change at the state level that was beyond our control. And I'd like you to go over that, so they can understand why there's a change, because one way we were able to do it, we can't do that now. So, if you could explain that a little bit for them to understand why they're going to be experiencing an increase out there.
I'd be glad to. And I'll go into the specifics of the rate increase as we get into the budget presentation tonight. The reason that we have to propose a rate increase, previously, we were using monies that were cut. Whenever somebody hooks onto our sewer system, they are charged what we've called a TAP fee in the past. They're called development fees now. Traditionally, you've been able to use those funds to help support the operation of the sewer plant. So, the guy that's actually there, the things that actually, the chemicals that have to go into the plant, the maintenance to haul sludge away from the plant whenever that has to happen, all those kind of daily cost factors. The issue is that the state passed legislation approximately two sessions ago, and that legislation says you can no longer use those connection fees or TAP fees to help support the operational cost of any sewer or water system in the state. So, in order to make up the lost revenue, operational revenue that we need to be able to keep the plant running, we have to propose a sewer rate increase. It's not, it's nothing that we've done to increase cost as much as it's a state law change that is forcing us to take funds, to find funds from a different place to be able to supplant those that we can't use for operational considerations anymore. You're welcome.
Can I add on the Coin Jock Bridge thing? I received a lot of complaints this weekend, as well as had the privilege to pick up multiple cones in the thing about three or four different times. I talked to our local representative supervisor from NC DOT, Reggie Saunders, twice on Sunday, and he had emailed, I guess, some of his superiors. And that's not our NC DOT, that's contracted out by somebody else doing that. And there was Friday, Saturday, Sunday, there was nobody out there working, and it was one lane on both sides. Like you said, I was told that wasn't going to happen anymore.
Yeah, my understanding that we have from NC DOT is that, starting Memorial Day weekend, that they will make sure that during the weekends...
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or whatever.
Yep, that it'll be two lanes of travel going both ways.
Good deal, thank you.
Ben, I had a follow-up question on the Moayak sewer system. So, as I understand it, basically, it was a bad design.
Yes, sir.
The engineering was faulty.
Yes, sir. I believe so.
You know, I don't know, I understand there was some, you and I had a discussion about statute of limitations on construction, but I don't, I guess my question for you is not, actually, it's not for you, technically, it's for Ike. Is there some form of professional liability associated with this? I mean, we have an engineered stamp system that was doomed from the get-go.
Well, I'm looking at that, but we want to make sure, first of all, there is no statute of limitation issue, and secondly, whether indeed it is an engineering issue or some faulty design. But, anyway, we're looking at those issues on a staff level at this point.
Because the amount of inconvenience that it's caused, not only our staff, but the residents of Moayak, and potential business that's trying to come in here, is unacceptable. And whatever can be done to, you know, track down and hold accountable those that have, you know, messed with this, I think it's only fair to the residents.
Thank you. Next up, we have administrative reports. Item A is budget presentation for the fiscal year 2019 to 2020, and to set a date for public hearing and possible action. I guess we're back with you again tonight.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We're going to walk through the County Manager's budget tonight. So, this is the budget that I've prepared to present to the Board and to the public. Obviously, the power to adopt the budget rests with the Board. We will have a public hearing, and I'll go into that at the end of the presentation, so that the public can come and voice any concerns they may have, or any opinions. I want to stress that, one, it is a statutory requirement that every unit of local government in North Carolina have a balanced budget by July 1. So, that is something that we have a statutory obligation to do. But, it is also, more importantly, that it is probably the largest piece of policy that any elected board in North Carolina adopts in the course of their business. And the reason for that is this sets the, this sets the work going forward for the rest of county staff. So, it's a very important document that you all consider, and a lot of work has gone into this behind the scenes with staff. I want to say thank you to all of the staff members, whether it's the Finance Department, or department heads, or the folks under them who've helped prepare parts of this budget. A lot of consideration has gone into it, and I'm very proud of the document that we've put together. The budget consists of 27 funds. So, this consists of everything from service district funds to the general fund, which is what most folks think of as the county budget, to enterprise funds such as water and sewer. So, we're going to start off by talking about the general fund. Like I said, when most folks think of the county budget, this is the fund that they think of. I'm proposing that we have no increase in countywide property taxes this year, that it remains at 48 cents. And the budget that I'm proposing is actually 0.77% decrease from the amended budget that we're currently operating under. So, any budget amendments that have been made, the budget that I'm proposing essentially is less than what we currently have as an amended budget. There are things that happen in the course of the year that require us to amend the budget. A good example of that was the funding that you all provided to the school system at the last meeting. It was $200,000 for an emergency repair to a school that had structural issues with an exterior wall. Those kinds of things increase the budget throughout the course of the years. You have these unforeseen circumstances that come up. And so, that's why it's a decrease from the number that you currently have for this year's budget. These are, there are two things, as we go through this, that are takeaways, and these are specifics. Public safety and education are the driving cost factors for the budget this year. They are the things that, if you look at the cost centers and where we have increases, those are the ones that are really pushing the budget forward. One of the big personnel additions that we have this year is adding staff to EMS. This is going to do a couple of things. It's going to reduce overtime expenditures. So, we look to see, okay, we've got enough overtime now, that we should reduce those expenditures. The other thing that we're doing is adding staff members on the Carova ambulance. Right now, we only have actually funded one staff member for that ambulance. We're going to fund two because of safety concerns for our staff members. You're also going to see a 4.41% increase in instructional spending or current expense for the school system. We're going to get into that more in depth, but it is based around a formula, but there is some extra in this budget on top of that formula, but we'll address that in more detail later. So, this is a chart that shows basically what the properties in Currituck County are worth over the years. And so, what you'll see, this chart runs from 1999 through 2000, through the projected year 2000. You'll see a steady trend line. You see the big ups and big downs are on reevaluation years. And so, the blue vertical lines are where reevaluations occurred. The, obviously, in 2005, you had a lot of appreciation of properties. And then, again, whenever we did it at the tail end of the recession, you had a big decrease. But, if you take that, you can see there is a steady trend upwards, if you took those fluctuations out. This is the tax base based on region. One thing of note here that's worth pointing out, and this is a difference from the current year to next year, we are projecting that Corolla will have a, or the Outer Banks portion of our county will have a 1% decrease in the amount of tax base that it is responsible for. And actually, Moayak is going to see a 1% increase. So, you're seeing a trend moving forward of property value in Currituck County shifting away from the Outer Banks portion of the county to the mainland. And I think that's a trend that's likely to continue with the rate of development that you see in Moayak. So, once again, here's your tax-based valuation. This is pointing out that it's a positive trend as you go. If you take the evaluations, the revales out, you'll see that it trends upwards as you move forward. Here's a little more detail about the tax base by region, and it breaks it out. You can see how the growth has changed over the years. And you can see that since 2011, 2012, there has consistently been a shift of property values coming to the mainland. Here's just a brief history of property tax rate in Currituck County from 2010 to now. And the tax increase that you see there in 2000, from 2012, '13 to 2013, '14, is a direct result of the reevaluation. So, here is, just to give you an idea of where we rank in the state for our tax rate, you'll see the lowest five on the left, the highest five on the right. We are 10th, we have the 10th lowest tax rate in the state of North Carolina, which is, I think, something that, it speaks to the fiscal... think, something that, it speaks to the, to the fiscal conservatism that you have in this county. You have a, a healthy tax base for sure, but there are a lot of communities that have a he, healthy tax base that are some of the highest taxed communities in the state of North Carolina. I think that this board historically has done a good job of weighing what services are needed, what services are wanted, and the cost to provide those services, and trying to find a happy medium, so that everybody has, has the things they, they need and some of the wants without basically hurting economic development in the community. One thing I do want to point out is that the folks on the lowest, there is one major difference between us and them, and it's that all of those counties have municipalities. And so if you figure the effective tax rate, if you live in a municipality in any of those counties, it's much higher than the tax rate listed there. And the folks, the folks in Currituck County are getting a lot of services that you see in cities at a much lower tax rate.
Hopefully, everybody caught that at home.
Ball enforcement.
Law enforcement's a big one. I mean, we, and, and we'll get to that as we move on, and you see our, our cost centers and where they exist. We provide a level of law enforcement that is above what a typical sheriff's office provides, because we are also the police department. Yeah, I mean, we, we fill both of those roles. Here's the average tax rate statewide. That's the top line. The bottom line is the Currituck County tax rate. The years didn't show up on the bottom, if that is through this coming budget year. You can see it's flat. This one is, is an interesting chart, and I'm going to, I'm going to pick on, on Dan Scanlon a little bit, since he's not up here. You will see that in 1999, 2000, the tax rate in Currituck County flattens, and it only changes because of a revale. And that speaks to, one, the leadership of the Board of Commissioners, but also to the stability brought to this county by Dan Scanlon, and his ability to manage a budget around the resources available, instead of managing a budget around the, instead of managing a tax rate based on what he wants. And you can see how it flattens. When Dan becomes your county manager, the tax rate flattens. And that's indicative of a stable environment that's good for economic development, for business growth. And I think it contributes to the ability to have a low tax rate in Currituck County and still have a lot of the services that you see here. This is the amount in millions of dollars that you see collected from the tax rates. The, the bump that you see there is a direct reflection of the revale. Even though the revale happens a couple of years prior, it takes a couple of years for that to filter into the actual revenue projections. This is, this is the closest thing I can give you to the, to a vital statistic for a county's financials. You've got a couple. One is, is fund balance. You heard the audit report last meeting, and how it is a healthy fund balance. This is one that shows what we budget and what we actually spend. And as long as that purple line is below the red line, it's good. If we start to spend more than we budget, it's bad. You don't want those lines to touch. And so this shows that we've been very conservative in how we've budgeted and how we've actually spent money since 2005. These are the sources of revenue for the general fund. You'll see, obviously, that the bulk of the revenue comes from property tax and sales tax. It's roughly 67% of the revenue that the county has. One thing I do want to mention here, because we've heard a lot of comments about it in public meetings, and it's going to get into the weeds just a little bit, our beach permit fees, the beach parking fees that we're charging in the four-wheel-drive area. A lot of people wonder where those go. You'll actually see them in the blue section of the chart, permits and fees. There is a, the recommendation from the county manager's office is to take those fees, apply them towards the program, and help offset some of the cost of the public safety things that go into implementing that program, such as the sheriff's deputies that patrol that parking area, and then take the savings we see from doing that, and setting aside roughly $100,000 a year to do some kind of work in the Carova area. My recommendation is the first year would be to get some roads up to a higher standard in Carova. And then going forward, it could be used for walkovers, it could be used for various other things that the citizens and the folks that visit Carova say that they'd like to see there. This is the, the value of property, real property, and then motor vehicles. And what you're going to see is kind of the, the equation that it goes through to give you what you actually collect in sales tax. So you'll see the sales tax rate of 0.48, and then multiplied, you never collect 100% of taxes. It'd be nice if we did, but not everybody wants to pay their taxes. And so that's why you see 99.08%. We discount that based on the collection rate that we've seen in previous years. I will say, Currituck County has a very healthy collection rate compared to other communities.
The highest?
That auditor, last, at the last meeting stated that it was the highest collection rate he'd ever seen in a community. Any, anything over 97% most folks are, are happy with, but the folks here pay their taxes.
Who sent Kevin after him, I thought?
That's right.
Cool.
General fund revenue sources, this is basically just the top sources that we have. You'll see that DSS administration is a considerable, a considerable amount of money. We'll get into that a little bit, but when we get into the highest cost sectors, DSS appears there, but it's because there's a lot of money that just passes through the county. It never actually, it's not county money that's being spent there. A lot of it is state and federal money. This is the appropriations by department. So these are your cost sectors of spending in Currituck County, and by the type of function that they serve. Obviously, you can see the largest is public safety. It's interesting, because this chart is more indicative of what you would see in a municipality necessarily than a county, because of the need to provide those higher-level public safety services, because of the lack of a municipality in this community. Once again, education is a large cost sector. General governmental is going to be things like the Tax Department, Finance, HR, those that support others, Human Services, Health Department, DSS, things like that. And Community Development Protection is going to be soil and water, planning and inspections. So this is by the, this is by type. And what this chart shows is, is not necessarily what function is performed with the money, but where the money is actually spent. As you can see, the largest cost sector for us is in people. That's something that we give a lot of thought to before we recommend approving new personnel, that being the largest cost sector, and it moves forward every year. And so we have, we really critique requests for positions as we move through the budget process. These are the departments that have the largest appropriations in our budget. Obviously, you can see the public schools is the single largest spend that we have in our budget. Sheriff's Office, EMS, Fire Services, and the Detention Center are all public safety. Fire Services there, just so everyone understands, represents our contribution to the volunteer fire departments in the county. Social Services is up there, but like I said, a large amount of that money is pass-through money. It never actually, it's not county taxes collected that are spent there. There's a lot of money that exists from state and federal money. Here you'll see the largest increases by dollar amount. Parks and Recreation is up there because they have a couple of big capital projects this year, which is unusual. They're replacing the Maple Playground at the old Maple Park, not the new playground there in front of the ball fields, but back on the backside. And they're redoing, resurfacing the, the ball fields to keep them as pristine as possible, so that we can keep recruiting travel tournaments and things like that, to try to bring more of an economic impact into the community. Once again, public schools saw the next biggest increase, right behind Parks and Recreation. And that increase is 100% in instructional and current expense. And the reason it's not more there is because of the extra $200,000 that they received for the school. So really, if you take that away, it's actually an increase in current expense of about $463,000. This chart is basically county employment, and so the different colors represent those different sectors and functions of local government. You can see that our, our staff has grown from 2014 until now. The one thing I want to point out is that the line that represents 2018 to 19 was as of July 1, 2018, 19. The reason there's such a large increase there is we had to have several staff members to help staff up some of the fire department needs that we had in Knott's Island in particular. Once again, here is a same chart for just the single year, broken down by function, and where the employees reside. This year, we are proposing 11 new employees in the general fund, nine of those in public safety, six of those exist in the EMS sector, two of them in the detention, and one of them potentially in the sheriff's office. And the two general governmental positions, one of them is actually the Assistant Finance Director, which was in the budget last year for half of the year, but because it's in there for the full year, it counts as a new position. And then a purchasing agent to help coordinate all county departments, so that they don't have to do RFPs, RFBs, purchase orders, and that kind of thing. It should streamline that process. Here you will see the current expense funding for Currituck County schools. You'll see that they had a 5.06% increase this year over last year. That number does include some extra money. The formula that we had generated approximately a $313,000 increase. County staff was able, through cuts to the budget and through other means, to be able to set aside an extra $150,000 for the school systems to help them make up the gap that they have in current expense. The reason that we did that is that the school systems, Currituck County school system's fund balance is dwindling and dwindling quickly. And we have a concern that if, if something is not done, then their fund balance will be exhausted, and then it will be an issue that we will have to, to struggle through, instead of trying to be proactive. We've had conversations, as you all are aware with them, about finding a way to manage their, their spending, which is, is part of the issue. But we understand that, that we can help be part of that solution, and so that's why that extra 150 is, is in the budget.
Couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
I have not seen their budget for next year. Has anybody seen their budget for next year?
No one on staff has seen their budget for next year. As I understand it, for the last several years, Currituck County Schools has presented, has adopted their budget in September or October of the year that they're currently spending in, which is not, which is not a typical procedure in most school systems.
Is there a state statute or something that would indicate when that budget is due to the Board of Commissioners?
There is. Statutorily, there's a requirement that they have to present a budget to the Board of Commissioners by May 15, prior to that budget year. So for next budget year, statutorily, they are required to present a budget to us five days ago, to the best of my knowledge. And I've checked with staff today, staff has not received that. And I don't believe anything's been sent to the board directly either.
Okay, so to follow up with what Paul had spoken about, how do we, how do we make that happen?
Well, I did talk to their chair.
Okay.
Did a chair-to-chair, and, and told them that going forward, next year, that it was going to be a requirement from us that we see a budget from them. We need to know what they're spending their money on and how they're spending it, especially when we go into budget talks. And other school districts do it. You know, we've heard them say to us that they can't do it. They're waiting on the state to see what the state's doing, and it's, it's just, it's just not true. Other school districts come up with this, and, yeah, they may have to make adjustments, but we do that every meeting. We adjust our budget as we go through and move money around as we need to. If an expense comes up, that needs to go from one place to the other. So at a minimum, that's about all we can do. We have to remember that that is another elected board, and we're responsible for funding them, but-
But they have a state obligation.
Right.
So, so I have a couple of concerns, continued concerns. And some of them were statements that, Ben, you just made. One of them is, they've blown through their, I'm sorry, that the fund balance, which at one time was right around $4 million, more or less, maybe a lot more. And that's been since I've been on this Board of Commissioners, we've gone through $4 million in about five years, that is above and beyond any budget that they've provided. And I, I am, at this point, I am still not comfortable that the explanations given, or the rationales given, or the fact that we have a fundamental understanding as to where those funds went. And so just off the cuff, I have a hard time approving an increase in their budget. They've requested, I think, over 800 grand, or have stated that they're, they need about an 800, you know, $800,000, 500 of it, plus or minus, is expected to come from the county's budget, which I, I just have an issue with something that we've all agreed is, is a problem. We still don't have answers to what the problem is, and now we're going to, looks like we're sending an extra $500,000 in advance of a budget that they've not provided to us as per state statute. So I-
Well, part of that is, is we're sending them an extra 150. So the, the other 400, 300 is part of the CPI, is not, yeah. So that was a normal funding mechanism that was built in. But yes, to your point, we are sending the money, and, and in our discussions with them, for the general public, we have been repeatedly asking them, and they can't seem to figure out where or how they started burning through their fund balance. Well, we know when, we just, they just don't know why or how, that they're burning through it. And so it's, it's, it's a tough nut to crack, when they don't even know what they're doing themselves.
I'm like, Paul, it looks like we're rewarding them. And they're, because I wrote down when we had our work session, that we're increasing the school budget total from last year, $928,000 more than they got last year. Is that not correct? When you figure the fund balance, and the formula and all that?
My, the, the increase to the school system's current expense will be roughly $463,000.
Does that include capital?
There, there is no increase on the capital side this year, but understand that last year, you did increase capital $400,000.
And we sent, and we just sent an extra $200,000.
You did. Yes, sir. Yep. So-
Capital's not the same thing. I mean, that's building improvements, playground equipment, and things of that nature. I mean, that's a little, little different discussion. They actually probably know where all that money went, but maybe.
And, and I will say, on the capital side, they did provide a capital piece that it was, it was, it's not an adopted budget, but it is a list of projects they'd like to fund with their capital spending. We did get that. But on the current expense side, to the best of my knowledge, we've, we've received no information.
So Mike, the question I have is, part of what we had discussed as a board was putting, I guess earmarking, for lack of a better, you know, better term, that, you know, certain categories would be locked in as to what funding were going in those categories. Do we basically lose that capability by adopting the budget that's before us right now, without having seen a budget from the school system? And, and I'll give you an example. If, you know, $400,000 is designated or is listed in their budget as something that we believe is important for the school system, I want to make sure that it's spent on that item, that it's not, you know-
Moved around.
Moved around, or sent somewhere to, to pay for other things. I know last year during our budget cycle, one of the positions that, you know, was the CTE program, and they asked for an extra, I want to say $68,000, more or less, to fund for a position, that we as a board felt that that was very valid. They got a grant to pay for that position, and we found out kind of on the side. It wasn't in full transparency, it wasn't with full, you know, with this board's full knowledge. I, for one, would like to make sure that things that we believe are important, that those funds are actually being spent on that. Do we lose that ability by where we're at today, because we don't have a budget from them?
If, there are a couple of things. If you adopted the budget at the next meeting, which we have to advertise for a public hearing and hold that public hearing-
Understood.
You would lose that ability as it's currently, as the budget ordinance is currently written, because you were adopting simply a pot of money for current expense. The only, the one thing that I think we all, if, if that's the path the board wants to go down, I just want to make sure that you all have a good understanding of what that would do. While it does say that the Currituck County dollars only spent this way, there are ways, I would imagine, to move state and federal money around, so that ultimately, they could fund whatever they, they want to. It's just the Currituck County dollars stays where you say. So they might take the money that you say goes to books, but decrease the amount of money that they get from the state for books, and put that money, because the state money comes in as a pot. And so they would probably, I mean, that's what you typically see, whenever I've seen other communities do that.
Well, I, I just want to make sure we have the ability to, to put a check in the block. And I, I can't control, I'm sorry, we can't control with what the state does, we can't control what the federal government does. But we have an absolute obligation to our county citizens that- that we add some element of oversight to what has been a $4 million free for all. I, I mean, I'm sure if they could defend it, that would be, that would go over a lot better. But the reality is we've gone through a $4 million fund balance in five years without any apparent stop. And I, you know, it's great that we're adding an extra 150 on top of the CPI index formula that we have. But I think we're forestalling the inevitable. They've not, they've not executed a budget, per the budget that they've submitted to us since I've been a commissioner. I, I think we'd have to go all the way back to when Owen was a commissioner, the last time.
We used to get their budget.
I'm sorry.
Before May?
Yes.
What happened?
It can't happen. Something's happened at some point before I became a commissioner.
But historically, they always have gotten more money from the state than they anticipated or budgeted for. So my suggestion is we hold 150 until they present a budget.
Well, now as.
The only problem I have with that is the people you're hurting by doing that. You're not going to force them to do a budget. The, the people that are hurt when you withhold that money, holding the board hostage, the Board of Education hostage are the students.
Teachers and the students. I mean, I've heard they've had to buy papers and stuff like that, other than teachers.
I think going forward, we can look at something like that. But by, at this juncture, if you're saying we're not going to give them money unless they give us a budget, when will that be? We don't, we don't know, right?
Well, we give them the CPI and just hold 150 and obey us and see if they can produce a budget to us.
So you're saying we, we could put it in the budget, but it wouldn't be.
Well, the other reality is.
Given to them until they presented.
What kind of budget do you get?
Yeah.
I mean, they can throw a budget together and here you go.
That's what, that's what we've gotten for years. Is they submit a budget that comes in because it can't be, it can't be at a loss. It has to meet the month, the funds that they are issued. And so, and we've gotten flack by local newspapers that, and all of that and the, and the state, and the Currituck County School Board came up with a budget that met the requirements, that it did not exceed. It didn't go in the red. And the two weeks later, they're going to have to impact the fund balance to the tune of 250, 450, $600,000 in order to make their system work. Nowhere other than this does this happen. Well, just like we had the department. And Commissioner Jarvis, I appreciate that. I, I, I understand. But we can't do this. We, we can't operate the way the school system does.
We can't keep going down this road.
Okay. I agree. No, I agree.
The school board needs to be, they, they need to get themselves together.
Well, I mean, we, we can designate certain.
Not, no, because we're not going to have a budget.
We don't have.
I mean, if we had it, we could.
Yeah.
We could, but we can't do it.
We were supposed to have it.
But even when do that, that we, we cannot control how the school board spends the money.
I mean.
They're elected officials.
Maybe.
Well, to a extent.
We could line item our, our local funds.
Correct.
And all they'll do, they'll, they'll find ways to move money around. But to Paul Beaumont's point is that we earmark it to make sure that they didn't shortfall an area that we wanted to be funded.
That's exactly correct. That's exactly correct.
So if they shortfall another area, that's, that's on them. But it's an area that's particularly important to us or the community that we've heard from.
Each other departments, be it Parks and Rec, be it Public Works, be it Fire, be it EMS, everybody presents their budget. We, county staff, y'all go through it and go through that process, cut it up, try to get it to the dollar amount that we need. But I mean, like I said, if we don't have a budget from them, I mean, they just say, I want this and.
Well, and so the citizens know out there. I mean, this board is trying to take care of the school systems and work with them, help them and make sure the funds are there.
We don't know where their money's going.
Commissioner Beaumont stated, we are not getting the budgets and we're not getting the feedback or the answers that we need to to help us, to help the school, the school system.
And I'll, and I'll use the greenhouse as an example. They can't, students and the board has come to this, this body and asked for funding first for a greenhouse in addition to what their capital improvement plan is. They found the money in their capital budget and they're, and we're getting a new greenhouse. That's the way it's supposed to work. Not try to get us, I didn't mean that to sound that way. Not try to appeal to, you know, our heartstrings and get funding outside of the normal funding process. We all have budgets to work. You know that this county is under increasing financial stress to do a lot of things. And I'll use fire apparatus as an example. The cost of a fire engine today is almost double what it was.
Five, six hundred thousand maybe?
Yeah.
At least.
And, and we have aging fire apparatus throughout this county that is going to be a crisis that we can't address because we're, and, and I'm not suggesting that the 150,000 is going to make or break a piece of apparatus. But that's what your job has been during this budget cycle, is to try to make all the money work. That's great as long as everybody is playing and everybody is on the same team. And no other department, no other group in this county gets to get their budget approved with actually having to present one. That I find to be.
It's kind of scary.
Unacceptable.
They're the only ones having done it.
Yeah. And it's the highest dollar amount going of all the, from that previous slide.
It is. It's, it's the highest single call sector that we have as a community. So.
You know, if they could give us an indication of what that extra 150 is going to be spent for? Or is it just going to be thrown into the general pot and spent wherever?
The, the, the discussions that were had in a meeting with their superintendent and the chair of their board were that the $800,000 that they needed to make up was simply to make up the deficit so they didn't use their fund balance up. That's not above and beyond current expenses is the way that I understood that conversation. Once again, one of the issues is that they, they have not been able to provide staff with a specific item that has driven the cost and the spending up. The presentation, and it's the same one that the board sat through, spoke about funding issues, but it never addressed the spending side of the equation.
Well, is it not true that the state does not require the Boards of Education across the state to carry a fund balance? The county has to carry the fund balance in their fund balance.
That's accurate because in most cases, at least those that I can think of off the top of my head, public school systems don't go out for debt either. The, in North Carolina, the local government goes out and secures debt to build schools. And so the fund balance is housed in the county to be able to, to show that they are fiscally solvent and in good shape whenever they do that. There are places in the state where after the end of the year, if there's a surplus in school funding, that reverts back. I've seen school systems do that. So then it's held in a separate fund so that if the school system needs it in a, in a down year, that it's, it sits within the county. But there are school systems across the state that hold their own fund balance as well. It's just a matter of how the local boards interact.
So what you're saying is some schools have zero-based budgeting. They start over every budget year from zero.
Some, the issue that they run into is there is some incremental funding that occurs at the salary level because of the state budget. But what they will do is basically, they will take their budget, the ones that I've seen that practice something close to zero-based budgeting, they will wipe it clean other than what they think is coming in the state budget. On the current expense side, they'll wipe it clean and kind of figure out where those priorities are for the next year. It can be very cumbersome for a school system to do that. To speak to the budget process, all, all budgets, including this one, is the best estimation of what revenues we expect to receive. You know, I do want to make that clear. I mean, that's what every budget is because we don't have a, you know, a crystal ball that says, that tells us exactly what revenues we're going to take in at the county level.
So.
We budget revenues conservatively and expenditures, you know, over budget so that when they come in, that line that I showed with the red line and the purple line.
And, and so at the end of the year, when our auditor rolls through, consistently, the pattern has been, we did not spend as much money as we brought in consistently.
Consistently. We added a fund balance.
But we don't use the fund balance as our father's credit card that we can just go out and charge up just because.
Yeah. Yeah. We, we, I, I don't know.
Not that I have kids that would use my.
I think it's been a very long time, probably since the depths of the recession, that Currituck County actually spent fund balance for operational cost. That's what it's, but it's there for that. It's, it's, it's there for those times when it gets really hard so that you. Now, it's one thing to budget fund balance. It's a whole other thing to actually spend the fund balance. And, and that's the issue is when you're actually spending fund balance, you're depleting that rainy day fund. Budgeting fund balance doesn't necessarily mean you've spent it.
What's the school's fund balance right now, our best guess?
The best guess that they gave us in that meeting is that it would be 400,000 by the end of this fiscal year.
So as good stewards to the taxpayers of this county, can we ask the school system to provide us the written explanation as to why they have not met the state statutory requirement to get us a budget in time so that we can let the taxpayers know the reason for that? And I guess secondly, to Commissioner Owen's statement, can they provide us with a detailed description on that 150,000? How it's going to be line itemed?
I, I can definitely reach out to their administration and have that for you all before the, if they can provide it that quick.
I don't, I don't know that the 100, it's not the 150.
It's everything that's going.
The whole budget inside of it?
The whole thing that.
Well, if they can give us 150, they can give us the budget too.
I mean, I'll, I'll tell you what I'm tempted to do is say, here's your budget from last year, which, when did that come in?
They adopted their budget for the current year on October 4th of 2018. So it was supposed to be adopted by May 15th of 2018. It was adopted October 4th of 2018.
And I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners, when did you see a copy of that budget? I saw it at our, our winter retreat.
To the, to the best of my knowledge, and I talked with the finance director about this before the meeting, I know that she pulled the budget around the time of the retreat, just went and checked the website and pulled it. I don't know that they sent us the budget. Of course, at that point, to be honest, the, the allocations, I mean, if they don't, if it's not here before we approve our budget, then it doesn't inform any decisions that you all can make. So. Which is the reason that statutorily, it's required to be here by May 15th.
I'm inclined to say, here's your budget from last year because that's the official, that's the last official budget we saw from, from the school board.
What the state does when the governor wants on the budget, right? They work off previous year's budget.
It's called a continuing resolution. We do it on a federal basis as well. And it, you know, that's a temptation. I think we may need to discuss that further. But I, I think Currituck County is a little weary of this process and how, you know, and I'll, and I'll tell you something else. I'd feel a whole lot better because we also took flack for auditing, for doing the school audit. And I'm not comfortable that we fully embrace that as possible cost savings. I know some of them are unrealistic or unattainable. I get that. But I'm not convinced that we really engaged with trying to cut costs as experts in that field brought to their attention. And I, I just have a hard time with that and then turning around and, and sending another $500,000 on top of last year. That's it.
Okay. We've gotten nowhere.
All right.
That, that being said, you're going to, or you're going to reach out to them to see if they can have a copy of their budget that we were supposed to get the 15th of May.
They, they don't have a, I don't think they have a budget to provide you.
They don't. And I think.
Then they'll provide us last year's budget and we'll approve that. Well, I think Commissioner Payments probably biggest comment was, why are you guys not getting it done when your statutory are required to?
I, I can reach out to their, their administration and see if they can provide that answer. The, the one thing that I want to make sure that the public understands as we move forward, the Board of Commissioners has no authority to actually approve the full school budget. That authority rests with the Board of Education. The only thing that you as a group have authority to do is to be able to say how much in county tax dollars are going to go to the school system. As far as where that money is, their total budget is adopted by the Board of Education. I just want to make sure that that is, that's clear to everybody that either watches the meeting or follows the meeting or reads minutes or anything of that nature. So.
Where were you?
Yes.
I am still in schools.
Oh, okay.
To give you an idea, while it, it, this, this is a 5.06% increase in current expense, the largest percentage increase is to education in general. So. This is the proposed budget and I want to address the CTE coordinator because that came up. I have not been able to ascertain if that grant is a continuing grant or a one-year grant for that position. We can budget the money specifically for that. And if they have a grant, that money doesn't have to be allocated.
I thought they told us it was just for a few years.
I thought it was a couple of years.
Yeah, not, not long. It wasn't going to be.
We left it in just in case because that is obviously a priority for this board, that that kind of education occur. If they needed, it's there. If the grant doesn't, if the grant's not there, this funding's there.
Can you let them know what the CTE stands for, the coordinator?
Continuing Technical Education. Career, sorry. Career Technical Education. Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. So, and it's, it's true. It is. When, when industries are looking to locate in a, trying to find a place to locate in today's economy, workforce is the number one issue that they have. It's not space. It's not buildings. It is, do you have trained staff to be able to fill our positions? And it's not just trained staff today. It's do you have a pipeline over the next five years to be able to provide trained staff?
And at a national level, we're hurting.
We are. Yeah.
Local, state, national.
The trend is that for the last two decades, we've pushed high school graduates into four-year college programs. And because of that, we don't have a workforce built up in some of these fields. And it is an issue. So this is, this is the debt that the county carries. This is not just necessarily general fund debt. You'll see that we have some of the enterprise funds and some of the service districts on there. The one debt that you'll see on there that does fall into general fund is the public safety facility. That will be basically with, with the debt that we're going to look at, you would do two payments a year. Next year, we would only have one payment. So we're anticipating that the debt payment for that facility will be somewhere around $1.6 million a year.
No cell phones at the bar.
Be trying to shut us off because I have another family member trying to reach me. Actually, it is.
It wasn't that sister.
Not this sister. Not this sister.
We're, we're going to move into the operating budget now. So this is going to look at all of the things the county does, not just the general fund. And so you're going to see things like enterprise funds, service districts such as watershed, road districts, that kind of thing, as well as some of the revale. This is a breakdown of the operating budget. Post-employment benefits are health insurance for retirees. We're required by law to pull that out separate. So the net operating budget for Currituck County, including all the different funds, is roughly 80 million. You might as well call it 80 million dollars, 79, 80 million dollars. So. These are just some of the highlights moving forward. The total increase over the current budget is 3.17%. So that's all of the funds combined. You saw an increase of about 3%. We had some new, some districts that were expanded. We had the creation of some new districts that we are proposing to put a tax rate on. One of those, and we'll get into it, for instance, the Knott's Island District. There's revenue that comes in and so that's where that increase comes from. You'll see that we called out the 150,000 over the normal formula increases. This is an issue that I addressed and I want to talk about it a little bit more here, which is the sewer rate increase that we're proposing. I, I said earlier in the manager's report, state law has changed and they have basically taken revenue that we use for operating and have moved it to the capital side. We can no longer use that to pay the, the monthly bills that it takes to run a sewer plant. In order to make up that difference, the, the county manager's office and myself are proposing an increase in the sewer rate. The base rate would go from $30 to $40 a month. So no matter how much you use, that's a set fee. And then after you go into the brackets that require a usage fee, it would go from one and a half times the cost of water to three times the cost of water. I understand that this is a, a large increase. I understand that it has a serious impact on, especially folks on a fixed income who are on our sewer systems. The reason for this, as I stated, is a state law that changed. The state law was pushed. The state law was pushed a couple of years ago by development interests because they felt like tap fees, not in Currituck County. I can tell you, you saw the, the response from our study that we did, our tap fees were very fair. In some communities in North Carolina, they were using tap fees to subsidize the operational cost for years. And so, it was able to keep the rate low, um, as far as the monthly bill. The development groups in the state of North Carolina had an issue with that, and they got legislation passed. And so, those tap fees can no longer go to fund the day-to-day cost of water treatment and sewer treatment. And because of that, in order to just pay the bills, it's not for an expansion or to add new personnel, it's simply to pay the current bills that we have, we're looking at a sewer rate increase, um, in Currituck County.
And my understanding, this has to be a self-sustained or self-sufficient, you can't use county tax dollars for the operations.
It does. And, uh, water and sewer is what's called an enterprise fund. And in an enterprise fund, it basically has to exist, the best way to explain is it has to be, it's almost like a business that the county runs. The county can't put general tax dollars into this, and then if we had a shortfall on the other side, we couldn't use water and sewer revenue to balance up the county, which is typically the way that you see it in most communities whenever they have issues. They'll, when they get in trouble, they use water and sewer money to help keep property taxes low. We have kind of a reverse here. Part of that is just that we are new into the sewer game. I mean, we, we have not had county sewer for a very long time, especially on the mainland. We have a lot of development that's coming, but it's not here yet. As we have more units that connect to sewer, I anticipate that the rate can go down. Um, we're not looking to, you know, and obviously, the rate, if we can lower it going forward in future years, we definitely will make a recommendation to do that.
But if we get more hookups, some more uses, then obviously the rate could possibly go down in the next few years.
Are the tap fees going down?
The tap fees are set about where they are. They did a, Raftillis did a study of that, that we brought before the public into the board, I think it was a couple of months ago. And basically, what they do is they look at how much it costs to build a plant to manufacture that amount of water or to, to treat that amount of sewage. So, the tap fees are set based on this formula that the statute devises. And so, that's something the board adopted, um, a couple of meetings ago. I can't remember whether it was two or three, but some of them went up, some of them went down. We have several different tap fees because we have, you know, ocean sands water and sewer, we have Outer Banks, Southern Outer Banks water, and we've got mainland water and mainland sewer. So, there were some changes to, no major changes in, in any of those, though. Some went down, some went up a little bit. But I can tell you that they were not, nowhere near as drastic as what you saw from some of those studies across the state. So. We plan in the next year to begin construction of the public safety complex that's going to house emergency management, communications, sheriff's office, fire and EMS, highway patrol, and will also on the second floor have COA classrooms so that they can do training for public safety curriculum. It will also house the EOC in the event of a hurricane in our community. And so, that was the debt piece that I spoke of earlier. We, we are creating and are going to, we recommend an implementation of the Knott's Island Fire District with a five cent tax to support the combination fire service that we have there. The five cent tax, as was discussed previously, does not pay for the enhanced service totally, but it does help offset some of the cost. Five cents, we felt, was the tax burden that the folks there could bear since we've asked that same burden to be, um, to be handled in Corolla for the increased fire service that they have over there. Just to address the other service districts that we had, we had the expanded Guinea Mill District. The, the staff is recommending we go from a one and a half cent to two cent rate there. Those will be used to clearing snag ditches in the Guinea Mill area. We also recommend that on the Carova roads, you institute a one cent tax. I already mentioned that we've got $100,000 set aside that will flow into Carova to help bring some of those roads up to certain standards. We also are budgeting the entirety of the horse tour permits to go towards the roads in Carova, as well as our recommendation to move $30,000 of occupancy tax into the roads. And then one cent of tax there generates roughly 28 cents. So, that way, for the maintenance portion, it's roughly a third and a third and a third horse tours, occupancy tax for the folks who enjoy the beaches of Carova during tour season, and a third from the year-round residents and property owners. So, on the watershed district, staff received direction to put out information to the rental companies to reach back out to the property owners. We had talked about a one or two cent tax to help with stormwater improvements in the Carova area. We sent that email out as of lunchtime today. There had been no other responses to our survey. We've stated that we leave it open until May 31st, but unless we have a, a, a large amount of surveys come in between here and the next board meeting, staff's recommendation will be to hold, the districts created, leave it set at zero. If they have emergency pumping, then the question that will have to come before the board is, do you do that and then levy a tax later? Or do you say, we couldn't pump this year, we don't have it, and then see if there's community support to levy a tax to save the money for emergency pumping?
Well, I would say, based on last, our last commissioners' meeting, that overwhelmingly the, or at least the folks that vocalized themselves, they're not necessarily interested in emergency pumping. So, I think that's very important, that those that are watching or that are here understand that based upon the feedback that we've received, they don't believe pumping is necessary or needed. So, I, I think right now that we'll honor that request.
Yeah.
Two will hear differently.
Yep.
Can you say that again so they can have that on Facebook?
I think they already got it on Facebook.
Um, another major spend in the budget is, like I said, the second staff member on the Carova ambulance right now. We don't have a fully funded staff, second staff position there, which is a safety issue. It is my recommendation that we begin a salary study plan for county employees. We've had issues with recruitment in county, especially as we have some retirees go out. The way that our system is set up, there is a career development plan that basically the more, the longer you work for Currituck County, your salary increases based on that, on the years of service to Currituck County. Recruitment levels may be below market value and what other places are paying whenever somebody first starts for a community. So, my proposal is to look at the county in three different tiers. The salaries that are the, the lowest salaries would get the first look. We'd look at it next year and then fund the results the year after. So, the first year's not a large spend. We've budgeted roughly $42,000 to be able to do the study. It could come in considerably less than that. We might even be able to handle it in-house, but we've got that budgeted. But my recommendation is that we keep that process going and don't turn it off so that we're always at least a couple of years, three years within the market rate so that our retention, or not retention, our recruitment doesn't struggle because of that. We, we have had a couple of positions we've opened up, assistant finance director being one, um, the IT director is another one, and we've struggled to recruit people. Obviously, we don't have a retention problem. Both of those, our finance director's been here for many years, our IT director's been here for many years, but recruitment seems to be an issue. So, that's a proposal that I have. And then the other thing, just because it was such a large increase to the percentage of the budget, so if anybody calls out that Parks and Recreation saw 100% increase in the budget this year.
Playground.
It's not a large number, but it's the playground at Maple Park and the regrooming of the ballfields. But the, the whole number's not a, a large number, so.
Is Moyoc in there also?
Moyoc Playground?
Mm-hmm.
So, the Moyoc Park is actually already funded. It was funded, uh, last year and in the current year, the one that's in Shingle Landing?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so it is funded and it's moving forward. Uh, we're in the design phase right now. So, that was funded, it doesn't need any more funds in future years, and so that's why it's not in this year's budget.
It's completely funded.
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am. Yep. Here, you're going to see just a, just a chart that shows the operating expenditures versus the general fund expenditures. You can see, the operating fund's the total county budget, the general fund is basically what people think of as the county budget. As you move forward, you'll see that the operating budget is 79 million, the capital projects fund is 1.3 million. That is the, all the small projects that kind of roll up as capital moving forward. And then when you figure the capital in, it's a 4.5% increase over the current year's budget. These are the major, um, capital projects that you're going to see this year. Like I said, the maple playground equipment replacement, public safety building, and phase two expansion of the Moyoc sewer system. Here is the total budget benched against the general fund. And this is the calendar, so we're presenting the budget tonight. We'll have a public hearing on June 3rd. It could be adopted then. It has to be adopted before July 1st, 2019. That is a statutory requirement. So, but, but after the public hearing, the board is.
Right there.
The school gets away with it.
Yeah. I have a legal authority to make sure that a budget's adopted, so.
Just ask.
Yeah.
Theoretically, we could adopt it on June 30th.
You could, you could. Uh, that would be the last date that you could adopt it. You could call a special meeting and adopt it June 30th. Um, and there are boards that have done that in, in the past, especially when there's a really hard budget decision to make, so. And then obviously, the, the budget becomes effective July 1st, 2018. For the public that wants to view the budget, they can come to the county manager's office and view the budget, a hard copy of the budget. It's also going to be on the website, it'll be on the website on Wednesday. It takes a little while to kind of format it after tonight's meeting and, and make sure that it, it's there for public consumption. And that's the annual operating budget, proposed annual operating budget from the county manager's office for 2018, or 2019, 2020.
Can I add one thing, too? The two detention officers that were required at the jail, that was state, that was a state requirement, too, so that was not like an additional, that was.
Correct. Those two detention officers are there to meet the, um.
The mandated state requirement for the jail.
Mandate, yeah, mandate for jail staffing purposes.
Okay. I just, I don't, I don't remember if we said that. I just wanted to add that in there. So, that was something that was not requested, it was required.
Yes, sir.
And I know also, we had discussed when we had our budget work shops about cost of living raise for county employees and.
Um, there are considerable, considerable budget pressures up against the county this year. Education's one, but it's not the only one. To, to do a cost of living increase for every employee across the board in Currituck County is roughly $500,000. As I looked through it, I just did not find the funding, I, I feel like we would have had to cut services in order to fund that, and I don't think that that's something that is fair to the taxpayers of this community. I do understand the burden that that puts on the county employees, especially when we have a health insurance increase and then the, the paychecks don't go up. Um, to be honest with you, that's probably one of the hardest decisions that you make whenever you, you put together a budget, because I'd, I'd love to give the employees a raise, but we simply do not have the money available in this year's budget. I, that will be a priority of mine next year in the budget, um, but we just had a lot of budget pressures this year outside of the normal incremental increases that you see.
Are we going to add, address the sheriff's department?
The, the shit. Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. The sheriff's department has requested a, um, a couple of things for their employees' salaries. The, the first one is an, some form of compensation for an associate's degree, which was a minimal cost, um, to the county. The, the other one, which through budget discussions initially was not in my recommended budget, is to basically give a larger percentage increase for deputies and other law enforcement, sheriff's office staff that have intermediate and advanced certifications. The reasoning behind that, that the sheriff's office put forward, is that they are concerned about their retention in the future, that they feel like if they don't do that, they will fail to be competitive with, um, police departments in this surrounding area and other sheriff's offices. I did not include that in, in my initial recommended budget because I felt like that the salary study eventually would help address some of those issues. After the presentation was made, the sheriff's office was directed to find the money to be able to fund that if they wanted it. They did come back with cuts to their specific budget, not the county budget as a whole, to be able to fund the roughly, it's roughly $115,000 to be able to, to take what is essentially a 2% increase per certification to a 4% increase per certification. And so, in the recommended budget that's before you tonight, those changes have been made. The incentive plan or the career development plan that the sheriff has proposed is part of that.
What's the retention rate here in Currituck County?
Um, the turnover rate, when you take, when you take retirements out, and, and just so that everybody understands, for any department that I give you turnover, I will never include retirements because that's kind of, that's what we want to happen. We'd like for people to retire from Currituck County. Um, the, the turnover rate was 3%, so it was, it was effectively two positions for the sheriff's office.
When I looked over the information that they gave us, it was kind of confusing. Are we going to address that any further?
Um, the information that was provided to the, to the board and, and to staff compared sheriff's office salaries by taking the salary of a sheriff's deputy and dividing it by the number of people that live in that community. In my estimation, having done salary studies in the past for other departments, I don't think that that's the best way to do a salary study. There's a, there's some information out there that the School of Government with the University of North Carolina puts together where they pull data of actual salaries. If you look at that, Currituck County sheriff's officers, um, for counties of our size are well compensated.
And I will say, though, our, our sheriff's department has some very well-trained, and we're very professional deputies and staffing in there. So, I mean, I mean, we're well-respected around the area, and I, and I appreciate everything they've, they've done and they do for this county. And, and the retention was a big concern because the citizens are expecting, you know, to have the best, and, you know, I'd want it, too. And, um, that's what they're trying to make sure that, uh, that we have.
That we have.
The best out there, and, um.
Now, a big part of that was getting you guys encouraging education and develop, career development within the sheriff's department and having a better, more professional police force. You guys are by and large now acting more as a police force almost than a sheriff's department at this point in time.
Highway Patrol and everything.
We're, we're four troop, we're four troopers down, well, correction, we're three troopers down in the county. We're not getting one this year. We do more recs. Sergeant Capps, who's sitting in the back, he can attest, we do more recs, we do more, our calls are up. We stopped 179 vehicles this weekend on the road for violations that you see on Facebook all day long. So, I mean, you know, the guys aren't sitting in a parking lot doing nothing. I mean, we're going to training, we're doing more. This county's getting more for less all day long with what those guys do. And when I say those guys, me being one of them.
And I, too, appreciate what they do. I think they do a wonderful job. And you had looked at increasing their salary through, in the first budget presentation you had given us. And if we had waited, because I think this is bad for morale, if I was a county employee, if we had waited for the study, that would affect them also. So, now it looks like we're just, and I'd like to thank a fellow commissioner for getting the information that I sent around to fellow board members to all the police depart, uh, the sheriff's department. It's certainly not that I don't appreciate the sheriff's department, I appreciate what they do, but I just think you had offered a raise for if they got certain certificates. You had said we were going to, uh, do a study, and to me, if I was a other county employee, and I, I have been a county employee, and I've also had county employees who have come to me and said that, you know, they couldn't even get a go about cancer treatment because of their health insurance. To me, it's just not fair to county employees, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
We have, I'd like to say this, like you said, for the different, if you work in the water department and you attain a higher certification, you get a pay increase. It's county-wide, so it's not just one thing. Ours was outdated. The North Carolina Highway Patrol just gave a 10% raise across the board. Um, your guys that have been here, trained, so forth and so on, um, and like the new county manager, B., we've discussed, I'm certified voice stress analysis, which is basically like a polygraph, but better, um, for positions, you know, in the county. We do other stuff, not that, behind the scenes that people don't know where he talked about us doing that for pre-employment and stuff like that. I mean, you could just go on and go on, but it's, it's not something that they're requesting that other departments don't get incentives as well. And ours was just outdated, to be honest, way outdated.
But that's why.
That's, that's pretty much what we did. And I mean, they cut the money out of positions because that was something that was important to us, and this administration was training, training, training. We, we want the best, in my opinion. If we're not, we're, we're damn close. training. We want the best, in my opinion. If we're not, we're damn close.
Any more discussion on the budget? We've got $80 million we can play with. Thank you all. All right. Well, next item on the agenda is public hearings. I think I'm gonna call a five-minute recess, just to stretch our legs, and we'll come back and get into public hearings. All right, I'll call the board of commissioners meeting back into order. As I said, the next item this evening is public hearings. APB 19-11 Complete Auto Credit has requested automobile sales use permit, if I can get that out tonight, that are properly located at 1383 Kerituck Highway, Moayak Tax Map 23, parcel 10, in the Moayak Township. And Ms. Lori, it's been a while. How are you this evening?
I'm doing well, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
All right, good. Ready?
Yes, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. It is a use permit, so we will need to swear in myself and the applicant.
Okay. Let the applicant come forth. And what do we got? Left hand on the Bible, right hand in the air? It's been a while since I've done that. Do you someone swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. All right. So, Ms. Lori, you're up again.
Okay, thank you. This is a use permit request for a automobile sales for property located at 1383 Kerituck Highway. This is located in Moayak. This is the, what we refer to as the old one-stop. There was a use permit issued or approved for this site in 2013, but the use was never established. It was never executed. So, the applicant has come in now and would like to have a car lot at this location. It is currently zoned general business, and car lots are allowed in GB with a use permit, and it is rural in the land use classification. So, this is a pretty straightforward application. The applicant is going to create, the display area will be here along the front. There will be new parking and gravel over here in this pink area. There will be required landscaping following the display area, and their total coverage will be within our limits for general business for, and for the property of that size. So, I guess that it's a pretty straightforward use permit. The technical review committee does recommend adoption of this use permit with the condition of the type A landscaping buffer required between the street and the display areas, and that the property will be developed in accordance with a minor site plan, which they have submitted the site plan before you as their minor site plan, and that the outdoor storage of vehicles shall occur only within the approved display areas as shown on this minor site plan. And with the use permit, there are four findings of fact that the board should make, and typically staff, adheres, staff goes over two of them, mostly responsible for two of those, and the applicant is responsible for two others. And the, one founding of fact is that the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans. And the staff does find that this, it is in keeping with the 2006 land use plan. It classifies this as rural within the Moayak sub-area, and the proposed use is in keeping with policies of plan, including ED 1 and ED 4. The Moayak small area plan also classifies this site as rural, and the proposed use is in keeping with the policies of that plan, including policy BI 3. The second finding that staff typically makes is that the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including but not limited to schools, fire and rescue, law enforcement, and other county facilities. And staff makes the finding there will be no effect on the school system, and that Currituck County has adequate public facilities of the others listed to serve this use. Like I said, other than the site plan and some landscaping issues, this is a pretty straightforward use permit, and I'll be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
If I may ask, how many total acres is the whole property? I know the, isn't there some property in the back, behind the building, a little bit further?
Yes, it's 1.54 acres. Sorry, 1.58 acres.
Now, is there any more behind there that the owner?
Yes, let me bring the aerial back up. So, you see the building, the display area here, and there is significant undeveloped property here in the, to the rear. So, this is, this is the property, so.
Okay. But all they're requesting rezoned is that 1.58?
They're actually requesting a use permit for, for this entire property. The use permit goes for the entire property. So, it's just, they're not going to be putting any improvements here in the rear of the property. So, the entire piece of property that they're requesting is, is general business.
Yes, ma'am. Is this the same property that there have been violations on with school buses parked on there?
It was, it is, and when they came in for a amended use permit, or to reinstate their use permit, it stayed that enforcement action, so that we could work with them to get the site plan, so they could bring it into compliance. That's my understanding. The applicant's here, and he can verify that, but it would have to adhere to the site plan. They would have to have a display area and the parking area and the landscaping. They would have to improve the site as per the site plan to meet our UDO requirements.
So, they don't have permission right now to be selling buses and cars and all that off the lot, correct? Because they don't have a use permit?
They do not have a use permit at the time, right.
Okay, the parking lot's full of cars. I passed it today. Is it just the parking lot?
May I speak on that, or do I need to wait?
Well, I'll let you get to it in just a second. We're just letting the county present their side of the case.
So, there was a use permit in place, and the applicant was, when he started this, he was under the assumption that that use permit was still valid. The use permit was not executed for two years, so the use permit expired. He proceeded ahead, and we have done enforcement action against him, but once they applied for this use permit, it stayed our enforcement action, so that they could conduct their business. That's where, through appeal or an amended use permit or something like that, will stay our enforcement action.
So, basically, we've been working with them to bring them into compliance at this point in time, and they've made a good faith effort to get to this point?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. Any further questions for Ms. LaCicero? Okay, then I'll open the floor. Did you have something? Okay. Mr. Sanner, if you can present your case to us as to why you should be, especially his permit.
The only thing I wanted to speak on was, in November, I did come into planning, because DMV requires me to get a letter from zoning, saying that the property is zoned for a dealership. I was given that letter. Subsequently, I was told that letter was given to me in error, and I was in violation. So, that's where we got into it. Otherwise, this all would've been done upfront, not after the fact.
Okay.
Well, I guess the question, I'll go back to Commissioner Kitty Etheridge here. With all the, I mean, my first impression when I drove past her, it looked like it was a store's junkyard for buses.
Presently, sir, there's only five buses on the property.
In the back, back there. I mean, it was pretty packed.
Yeah, at one time, I had almost 40 of them.
Yes. So, your intent now is to kind of keep that minimum to nothing back there and just have to show automobiles up front, and that's all going away?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's the only question I had.
So, the area behind the building, it's fenced in, but you can, you would ostensibly use that for overflow storage, would you not? I mean, in the car business, you have to wait what, until you have a title for a vehicle before you can actually sell it, is that correct?
Correct.
So, then, so you will be utilizing the rear portion of the, for excess storage of vehicles, or what have you?
Very limited. The only storage we'll be using, you'll see the existing pavement behind the building.
Yes.
Because technically, the vehicles need to be on pavement when they're on the property, is my understanding, or gravel.
Or gravel, okay.
So, the vehicles that you have on that site, on-site right now, are they presently in the display area?
Yes, there are some probably encroaching into parking area. Of course, I'm prepared to do the paving and spend the money to bring everything up to speed, and of course, adhere to the site plan.
Because on the left, or to the north, I seem to remember, like wall-to-wall cars. I don't.
I pulled in there last week when I was on duty. Not, they weren't in, there was no, there was something that happened for one of his employees, and it, the park, I mean, there's not a lot of room in there at the present time. It was seven days ago, maybe.
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify something, as this moves forward, the only area they can store vehicles is the area delineated in yellow on this map.
And red.
That's customer parking.
Oh.
As I understand it.
Also, the existing pavement, I was told, is okay as far as for storage of vehicles.
I'll let our planning director speak to that, but I want to make sure that's clear before.
Well, the stores, the cars should only be stored in the proper display area and not in the back, in the existing pavement. Now, what Mr. Sisino has been told by another, we tried to work with him to give him a chance to move the cars behind there to get through this process, but they should only be allowed in the, that's how we would treat other automobile sales, would only be, storage only in the display areas.
That would not be a problem.
Which is the yellow area on this map?
Yellow area on here.
So, I just want to make sure that, just so that you understand, sir, what staff is saying, is that only the yellow area on this map, that's the only place you can have cars?
Okay. Or if we would've highlighted the existing pavement as display area as well, that would've qualified, is my understanding.
So, that's your driveway entrance, right? I mean, you're...
The driveway entrance is further north.
Well, we've got north and south. It's, you can come in on either side, can you not? So...
They only use the one. You may, you're only gonna be able to use the north side.
Right.
Correct.
So, in the interim, are you currently selling vehicles out of here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you are not in compliance currently, is that correct, Lori? If there is...
Well, there was a violation issued, and that has been appealed to the...
Port of adjustment.
Port of adjustment.
Do you have any vehicles behind the building now, or in areas that would not be used? There are. So, my question to you is, what is your plan to get it, if we give you a permit tonight, especially use permit tonight, there's no incentive for you to fix that other than if we come and violate you again. So, my question is to you, is how, how do you, what's your plan of action to get the property in compliance going forward?
Well, the first step for me is, yeah, is getting the paving done, which is ready to happen. Once that's done, I think I can be organized, and even if I need to cull the inventory a bit, that's not an issue.
Okay.
I have no problem complying with whatever the requirements are.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? And I don't know if this is for Ms. LaCicero or not. On page 13 of the agenda packet, there is a list of, I guess, conditions from various departments, including inspection and fire and the county engineer. Have those been addressed? Those conditions are, one of them concerns the dwelling, others, fire apparatus. Have those conditions been satisfied?
We'll work through some of those with the minor site plan, take them through the TRC process and work through that. At this point, I'm not, I'm not certain if they have been addressed with the dwelling. That was something that was raised, because this, I guess at one point, it was converted back to a residence, and now it's gonna be a converted, there's gonna be a, it's gonna be, go to a commercial use again, and that would be something we would follow up on them through the, through the minor site plan process.
So, they did go through TRC, or they did not go through?
Yes, they did.
They did.
What TRC's requiring, okay.
Right. And we'll take them through the permit process and require all these during that.
I know in here, it lists is where Jason Atrell, what's his name?
Little.
Little. Says, you know, maybe if they go in and clean up the site, we could revisit the use permit. Is that something we can do? Because I came back today, and it's packed full of cars and buses.
His notes were, clean up the site plan I was submitting.
Clean up the site plan. This was, what you have before us wasn't the original submittal. Jason met with the applicant, Mr. Sisino, and I think your daughter, and worked with them to get the site plan that's before you tonight. That was Mr. Little's comment, so. But we can, you know, enforce, work with them to make sure that they are within their site plan, that all their display area is within their site plan, and they get their landscaping in, in their display areas up to our standards, and that they meet our UDO standards.
But with all these vehicles that are there now, is there any way, I'm asking the legal team over there, is there any way that we could require him to, I mean, right now, he's not in compliance with...
So, a couple of things. One, if the board, you obviously always have an option to table a decision or to table the hearing, to let the applicant do whatever they need to do to improve their case. The other thing is that if you approve the special use permit, they would be held to that and would go, if they, if they did not meet that within a time period set forth by the planning department, then fines would start to accrue, and eventually legal action could be taken to move forward.
The permit can actually be pulled after.
Yeah.
You'd have to go through another procedure, revocation proceeding, another quasi-judicial proceeding to determine whether the permit should be revoked. You can also add any reasonable condition related to the use of the property, so you could place upon a use permit if you're inclined to approve it, certain conditions that meet your concern.
And I have no issue complying with the conditions. We just got into a bit of a snafu that I was told, go ahead, start spending thousands of dollars opening a business, and then told, oh, wait a second, there was a mistake made, you need to stop. I've been trying to work with them, and they've been very fair working with me to come to an agreement to move forward, so that we don't have to have any kind of legal battle, because, you know, frankly, it's not my interest to do that. I just want to comply.
And how long did you say it was before they reissued that they made a mistake? Would you say it was 30 days?
It was actually more than that, because the letter was issued to me in November, but I had been speaking with the planning department from the summer with preparing to open the business. The zoning violation letter, so the letter was issued to me November 7th. The zoning violation letter came December 13th, but then I didn't receive that until January 9th. It was dated the 13th. I received it on Wednesday, January 9th, almost two months later.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question. At this time, I know they're asking to rezone that 1.5, whatever it was, acres, but that property's obviously a lot bigger. Is there any plans to do something behind the building?
The only property I'm in control of is in the blue outline. That's the entire site there.
Not rezoning.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's just a special use for business-owned cars. But it seems at this time, though, the board has serious concerns about getting this property straight before we would issue a permit, is that...
Well, I would ask that to be placed as conditions, and I will, and with a timeframe, I will happily meet that. What I don't want to have to do is try to appeal the...
Yeah, I...
My board of adjustments and...
Yeah, that, that will work through. I think the, I think the board at this point in time is probably not comfortable... in time, is probably not comfortable moving forward, because the property is so far out of compliance right now.
Well, the only item that is out of compliance is some parking of vehicles.
But you have to, you're going to have to have an active, basic construction site there, right, you're going to have to come in, do some paving, put some gravel down, are you refitting the building as well?
I know.
Okay.
Just to clarify, that might not be the plan, but as he goes through the inspections process, there could be substantial commercial upgrades that have to be made to this, because it was permitted under the residential building code, it is now going to fall under the commercial building code, which is a very different set of codes.
But there has been commercial businesses there.
Yes.
The issue is that it reverted to a residence.
There have been some commercial businesses there.
Yeah, it's, so, because it went to a residence, anything in there that was commercial that might have been grandfathered, will lose that status, and so it will have to be brought up to current commercial standards.
That actually happened to me, I believe, when I applied for special use, I think Commissioner Etheridge was back on the board back at that time, and actually tabled it to get me into compliance, so.
One other concern that I had, and I'll go back to way back, Moyoc muscle, and the issue we had at the time was, they had cars parked in the state right-of-way, if I remember correctly, and, and there was inability to get fire apparatus around to the equipment, are we sure that, because I'm, those cars are right up there, is that a concern here, or are we clear with that, because, or did that predate you?
Well, that would be, they would have to meet the 20-foot setback for the display.
That's in, on some page 13.
That's actually in here, fire apparatus must be able to come within 115.
Right, well, that, yeah. But the big one with, with Moyoc was, they, I mean, they had cars right up.
Right.
It, as long as that's not a concern.
Right, and, yeah, my neighbors had huge concern with that over the years, since you brought it to my attention, there's been nothing in the, parked up front, it's, we've been adhering to the setback, so yes, line of sight from his property.
And you can see that the right-of-way here isn't, it juts out just a little bit, it's an interesting anomaly, I guess, with the right-of-way, so there is a little bit extra room, but it would be 20-foot setback from, from the state right-of-way, Fort Carrot Highway.
You say that you're ready to do paving, how long do you think that would take?
The gentleman tells me that he can have the job done in two days.
There's a good base on the parking lot already, I mean, it's fairly level.
What would you do with the vehicles while it's being paved?
My intentions right now, especially, there's vehicles there that basically could be dead inventory to me, that I can send to auction and wholesale, I can get my inventory down to bare minimum, so that he can work around that with the paving, we already have existing paving, that the vehicles can be on, and I would be able to adhere to that while he gets this job done.
How many vehicles do you think the paved area that we're talking about for storage with support?
How many vehicles do I think on the, on the existing pavement?
Well, if he, the area that he wants to pave.
I mean, depends if they're buses, or SUVs, or cars.
So we could, you know, possibly set a number as a condition, how many vehicles he can have on the lot.
I'm going to just step in there, I don't think that that's a question that staff can answer tonight, for a couple of reasons, one, I don't know, obviously, you can tell by the site plan, it, it has a scale on it, I don't know how accurate that scale may or may not be, it's not the site plans we're used to seeing necessarily, but, I don't think staff, staff would need time to calculate the number of vehicles that the pavement could carry, I don't think we could give you that tonight.
How many vehicles are on the property right now, on the area that you're going to pave, just out of curiosity, 30?
I have 43, personally.
I was just curious. Okay, any further discussion, is there anybody want to put forth any kind of motion, or anything at this point in time, we haven't gone to public comment yet, I understand that, but if we table it, now would be appropriate time to do that, would it not?
Before public comment?
Yes.
Well, you'll, you'll want to be clear as to whether you are also closing the evidentiary effect, well, I guess you're not going to be, because you're going to be receiving a possible additional evidence.
Right, that's why, if we leave the evidentiary phase open.
So you leave it open, I mean, you can continue a matter at any point that you desire.
If we tabled it-
Or table, yeah.
If we tabled it for 30 days, or something, for us, to him to get in to compliance, and then come back in a couple meetings.
If I may, the issue with that is, of course, the paving is a significant investment in the property, how this was presented to me, was that I come, I get a conditional use permit with conditions, and then I adhere to those conditions, if you're saying, hey, Mark Sisino, go back, spend $25,000 paving your property, and then come back and maybe get your permit, I don't think that's being fair to me.
Well, it's not only that, it's that you're completely out of compliance right now, are you not, I mean, you've-
No, well, I would disagree with that, I have a letter from the planning department saying I am in compliance.
Is that true, Ms. LaCicero, is he?
Is this from, is this the original, the original letter? Yes, the original letter.
That letter is in error, and the county is not bound by an erroneous letter, there is no valid permit on the use of this property at this point, now, again, what the board may do, is, of course, you could approve it with conditions, that would require compliance within a certain amount of time.
Timeline with it, and if it doesn't, then?
I would just hate to see him spend money.
Oh, I don't think any of us would know, that part would be fair.
That wouldn't be fair to him, I'd like to see us table it, and there's vehicles all around the building, they're not supposed to be, if he could get it, not putting down, you know, asphalt, but at least getting the property so it looks like how it should look, and right now, there are vehicles everywhere on that piece of property.
The only answer I turn, that we could, we could approve this with guidelines, with timetables, that he has to have a certain, something done in a certain amount of time.
Yes.
Yeah, and that way, and if he doesn't get it in a timeframe, then he's-
Then it'd be, it'd be subject to enforcement action, whether it be notice of violation, and subsequently, civil citations, and or possibly potential revocation of the permit.
So that could, that could satisfy your concern with the timeline.
But understand, if you were to continue it, you know, he has an appeal pending before the Board of Adjustment, which right now stays a county enforcement action, allows him to continue to operate in a non-compliant status, until such time as either a permit is issued or denied.
How about far as the, if I can ask Ms. LaCicero this, how about the building itself, has there been a, on the county staff, in far as his requirements to today's times compared to, I mean, has that been completed?
I have been told I need to do, have an appendix be completed by a licensed architect, I believe, and again, that's a cost I'm definitely willing to bear, but I would like to know that in good conscience, I can, we can move forward.
That's, as we take him, he went through TRC with the site plan, and we got all these comments, and as he's issued the use permit, and follow up with any development permits that he needs, building permits, and things like that, that's when we would take him through the process for the landscaping, and to make sure the impervious surface, he adheres to any conditions set on the use permit, he makes the improvements he needs to the building, makes sure that he is keeping the vehicles displayed, so that you can get the fire apparatus in and out, once he, the use permit's issued, the conditions are listed by the board, then, like I said, we would take him through the building and zoning permit process, where he would have to adhere to the site plan, and all those, all those things I just listed.
Well, I have a question, as far as, a couple of concerns, as far as getting the vehicles or the buses from out back, and getting that portion, how long would that take you to do that, a couple weeks, five days?
If it was a time pressure, I could have it done in a week, if we're saying that, I mean-
I'm just asking, I mean, you tell me what, I'm just asking a question out there.
Being in the car business, cars come and go, I can make it happen as fast as needed.
Well, because there was concerns about, there was some still stuff stored in the back, and all that, and getting it up to compliance, is that what we're talking about? Yeah, to get that, and then, how long to get the, you said a week to get the driveway all paved and done, that what you were saying, you could do it in a couple days?
In a couple days.
Yeah, I'm not on the schedule yet, but once we're on the schedule, he told me two days of work to get that done.
Okay, I'm just, the questions I'm asking is, how much time to get in compliance, or how much time do you need to get this in compliance, it sounds like to me, no more than a couple weeks, yes, no, I mean, okay.
I'd like to see us table it, and let him get some of the vehicles that are not supposed to be there, removed, and if he can remove it, so you've got vehicles that, where they're supposed to be, instead of, I don't even think you could probably get in the back, there's vehicles everywhere, and if he can do that, then come back to us, and we see he's made a good faith effort to at least do that, and then we can put conditions on the rest of it, and use, give him the use permit.
I do respect that, but in the same respect, if you gave me the opportunity, and 30 days to get it done, that puts my wheels in motion, you'll show me, I'm going to be a good partner for the county, you know.
But you can still sell cars, according to our county attorney, we're not shutting you down now.
Correct, I understand that, but I'm looking to put this behind me, and move forward, and just get the place up to snuff, and, you know, once that is paved, that location is going to look, you know, 100 times better, it'll be organized, and you will be very pleased with the work I do there.
Well, I want to see the pleasing look now, I want to see the vehicles that are not supposed to be all around, if we have a good faith effort from you, you know, if we give you 30 days to do that, and come back to the next meeting, and go from there.
Mr. McCree, when does, when does this go to the Board of Adjustment?
The Board of Adjustment typically, typically meets the second Thursday of every month, it is not scheduled for the June meeting, so I guess the earliest it would appear on June, it might be July.
So you, right, so it's not going to affect you selling cars, and, yeah, because he's-
Okay, so I thought it was like, could be this month.
Mm-mm, no.
Are we certain I'm not on the, I thought, I haven't spoken with my attorney recently, but I believe we were on the docket sooner.
Well, I guess my understanding is that there's not going to be a meeting-
Until July.
Well, I guess, I'm thinking of another issue that's not going to be heard, I guess, I guess I don't know for sure whether, indeed, your matter has been scheduled for the second meeting, second Thursday in June.
Three weeks would still get it under the-
But, 30 days, plenty of time.
What you're saying, the first meeting?
Well, Commissioner Etheridge is, you didn't really make a motion to continue this.
I made a motion. To continue this for 30 days?
And maybe set what the meeting date is, instead of saying a number of days, so.
What's the, how many days before next meeting?
June 17th will be the second meeting in June.
Or the third will be the first meeting.
So you want June 17th, the second meeting in June?
Sounds good, June 17th, second meeting.
And what would you like to see from the applicant, before we come into that meeting, then?
That it looks like, I know it's not going to have the pavement and all that, but that he's moved all the cars and the buses and everything, to make it look like what he's presenting to us, that it's going to look like, without the pavement and everything.
So, so just to clarify, the expectation from you, Commissioner Etheridge, is that the vehicles fit in the yellow areas delineated on the map?
Correct.
We see what that looks like, and then you all would take on more evidence at the second meeting in June?
That's why you're a higher pay scale than me.
But he would still be allowed to conduct his business.
So operate your business.
Yeah.
Can we ask, before the tabling, I mean, if he's got to get rid of a couple vehicles, today's the 20th, you know, if he was on the third meeting, you know, I mean, can, I mean, if, he said it might take him a week, two weeks to get, I mean, could we?
Well, this doesn't force you to have a fire sale, it still allows you to operate your business, I think we're operating under the assumption that you will get your kind of house in order, if you will, and then come back before us to move forward through the process, so, we're, you know, we, we want to be friendly to businesses in this county, but at the same time, we need to get your, get you a little bit more closer to what it'll look like, and kind of get the property cleaned up, and then you're not forced to fire sale, you can, you know, source your vehicles out.
Fair enough.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
A quick question, did we have to mention, I guess we're not closing the evidentiary-
It's still open.
That's correct, it's still open.
It's still open, good, okay, good, okay.
Yes, sir. Okay, so we'll see you back here in a few short weeks, and hopefully we can put all this behind us.
What is the date?
June 17th.
June 17th.
That also, of course, means that the board needs to be aware that this is an active quasi judicial matter, that you should have no communication or conversation with anyone outside the hearing.
Okay.
I don't think we actually voted yet, did we?
We did, we did on the first, the motion, second. Yep, we're good.
Thank you, sir.
Because I thought I just jumped on a question before we took the vote.
All right, new business, item A, board appointments, number one, reappoint Joanne DiBello to the Albemarle Commission Area Agency on Aging and the Regional Advisory Council.
Whose appointment is that? Is that a?
Is that a consensus?
Consensus, yeah, well, it might- I know, could we maybe table that, I know she's had her, her daughter works in the clerk's office, I know she's had some, some, I don't want to like air, I mean, some health stuff, so I don't know if she wants to-
We got a letter where-
Oh, we did?
That she wanted it, yeah.
In the consent agenda, there's a letter from, she wants to be, not from her, but from the-
Yeah, I mean, she volunteers a lot, so I'm, she's a good, nice lady.
Make the motion, we approve it.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously, second item is the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District Advisory Board, and we had someone within our agenda packet to approve, someone resigned, let me give you that page.
I can properly speak to that.
Please do.
Pat Riley.
Pat Riley, that's it.
Concerns resign, so you have a placement for him, Roger Green, and this is the, the postland Ocean Sands, through the settlement agreement, it's a part of the board.
All right, then I'll move to appoint Mr. Green.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, unanimous, Commissioner Bymont, did you want to, while we were doing that, on this?
Mr. Chairman, I, as, as the members of this board know, as well as probably most of the residents of the county, we were served with a letter, I guess, indicating that we were currently being sued by the Corolla Civic Association at AL, and, and at face value, you know, I believe that historically, the county's done its due diligence, in ensuring that what we've done is, is completely been ethical and legal, and with that said, over the years, since I've been on the board, we've had, you know, and we've had ethics discussions, as far as, you know, the behavior of board members, the fact that they are, they represent Kirtuck County, and their actions, both on and off the field, and, and looking at the list of some of the folks that- And in looking at the list of some of the folks that have signed on to this lawsuit, it becomes readily apparent and evident to me that some of the signees are, number one, serve on our advisory panels or boards and, and/or are the spouse of others that serve on our advisory boards. I am not, I guess, there's an aspect of, I don't know that it's strictly applicable, but it's like suing your, your boss. And I, and I have, I've got a problem with that. I think that, you know, you can't serve two masters and if they're coming at us in one direction, yet serve on our advisory panel, I, I guess, appeal to the county attorney, but I would like to make a motion that anybody that's signed on to that lawsuit or is the spouse of someone that has signed on to that lawsuit, I, I believe it's in the county's best interests, notably all of the residents of Currituck County, that they be removed from the advisory boards that they sue on or that they sit on.
Sue.
Sue one or...
Long day.
I have no problem with the person who signed it, but you say in a spouse, if my husband signs something, I can't control that or vice versa. So I, I have a problem with it being your spouse.
Perhaps the county attorney could chime in on some of this. I believe there may be some concerns and with staff talking with people on these as well and just kind of exposing ourselves, is that correct?
Well, first of all, persons on, on your advisory boards, unless it's specifically provided otherwise in your ordinance, serve at your pleasure. You appoint persons that serve on your advisory boards to distill county issues and bring forward to you recommendations one would hope to, in furtherance and betterment of the county. Now you, you have some persons who are serving on advisory boards, again, that you would expect would be working for the good and betterment of Currituck County, who have decided to take on litigation against the county, this very Board of Commissioners. And really concerning and disappointing is that they would also name Dan Scanlon, the county manager, not just in his official capacity, but his individual capacity, that they make a specific statement within their complaint that, that they want a court to make any judgment against the county applicable to Mr. Scanlon in his individual capacity, that they, that they would have the audacity to sue this public servant who after 30 years is about to leave his position with this county and have this cloud hanging over his head as he enters his retirement. So I think the other concern is that to the extent that any of these advisory boards would be perhaps meeting with county staff who may perhaps have information that might be of assistance or something that should not be provided to them that might be of assistance to their litigation, I think that's something to be concerned about as well as whether these persons should continue while the litigation is pending to serve on these, these boards, again, that, that you look to, to advise you. And now you have certain persons who have decided to take an antagonistic position to the county.
I think Commissioner Beaumont, one of the concerns is that for the spouses, those individuals are signed on or are members of the CCA. And the CCA is a signatory on this lawsuit as well. So it's kind of a, a larger umbrella of problems and that's why I'm assuming that spouses are, you know, considered in this as well, so...
And this is by no means, you know, part of our rights as Americans are that we have the right to criticize those that, that serve us. And certainly this is not an attempt to squelch First Amendment rights and freedom of speech, but, you know, we rely on these boards to provide insight and guidance and help in making decisions that affect the regions and/or the boards that they serve on. As Mr. McCree just said, we've now, we're now in an antagonistic relationship where they believe that the county has done wrong and somehow, you know, they expect to serve in the best interests of the county at the same time accusing the very county that they serve with, with misbehavior. And, and I just, I don't see how that results in transparency as far as the decision-making processes, what, what ulterior motives may be involved. And I think we've just, I, I think that we will seriously impact our ability to rely on those exact same advisory boards to provide us the input that, that we so valiantly look for.
Well, I will second your motion, sir. And if there's, is there any further discussion on this issue?
So his motion was...
In the case, anybody that serves on an advisory board, I'm sorry, any signatory...
Signed on to or a spouse of one, signed on to the law.
Ten-four.
Specifically.
So do we want to see a list at our next meeting of those individuals?
I, I think we already have them.
We pretty much, we need to cross check them.
We've been served a complaint that has, has named all the plaintiffs in the complaint.
Is the association named?
The Corolla Civic Association is named also as a party with the president of the association who signed on behalf of the association.
Any further discussion from the board?
We got the first ten seconds.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously. Senior Citizen and Advisory Board, Mr. Commissioner Etheridge, I believe you had someone for that?
Yes, I'd like to submit the name of former Commissioner Janet Taylor to serve on this to replace Mary Ellen Maxwell, whose term ended a couple of years ago, from what I can understand. And since this is a continuation, if you don't have an appointment, she has continued to serve, but I would like to nominate Janet Taylor.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
And to make the mighty happy because they didn't want to lose people.
All right, any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Consent Agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. We already did the county manager's report. At this time, I'll recess the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners and open the special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority. And the Tourism Development Authority Budget Presentation for Fiscal Year 2019, 2020, and to set a date for public hearing and possible action is the first item on the agenda this evening.
Back again with another budget. This one will be a little quicker.
Okay.
So this specifically speaks to the occupancy tax budget that you have. The proposed, this budget has some statutorily restricted revenues. As you can see, the original 3% can be used for tourism-related expenditures. The additional 1% is split up between promotions and tourism-related expenditures. And the last 2% once again is split between promotions and tourism-related expenditures. This is how it breaks down by the different sections. So you can see the total budget is $11.3 million. On the section to promote travel and tourism, this is the specific definition of what promotion is. Here's how you see that broken down. The personnel are the people that carry out the specific promotion activities. This is the manner in which the tax is spent for promotion, so that large block previously, this is how it breaks down. Tourism-related expenditures, this is the definition for a tourism-related expenditure. The key here is that it's, it's something that in the judgment of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners, it's designed to increase the use of lodging facilities, meeting facilities, recreational facilities, and convention facilities in a county by attracting tourists or business travelers to the county. The important thing to keep in mind here is when it says tourists, that doesn't mean people going to sit at the beach.
Right. It says the county.
Yeah, it means, it means people who come from outside their home area to visit our community. If you want to come visit the historic Jarvisburg Colored School, then that's fine. Historic tourism is very popular all over the state of North Carolina.
Absolutely.
This is Heritage Park, so this is the Wellhead Club, this is the, the budget for that.
Could you go back a slide?
Yep. So we have revenues here that aren't just op tax.
And are we augmenting Heritage Park right now in the budget? I don't remember seeing that.
No, Heritage Park is funded through occupancy tax and through the revenues that they generate in-house. So tour fees, event fees, wedding fees, yep. So you can see that it's a budgeted amount from revenue to expenditure.
And...
Balanced amount.
I know Dan Scanlon's in the back of the room, but it seems to me the budget when I was first elected was about 1.2 million a year. Does that sound about? You could nod.
We were providing the trust $800,000 in addition to their revenues to offer.
And they had 400,000 of revenue plus our 800,000. So again, this is a sign of significant improvement.
Efficiency in operation, yeah.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Do we only take in $20,000 for weddings?
Yeah. Do we only or is it was...
The fees are $1,000 probably per event or 1500.
The difference, if I remember correctly, the difference is we used to rent the whole, well, and we brought in bleachers and, I mean, we, and now we rent the grounds.
Yeah, we allow, what, the, the reason that that revenue is lower is we allow the local businesses in the community to provide those support services instead of the county basically being the ones that provide...
What do you, what do they have roughly, 30 or 40 weddings a year?
20, I think. I think it's around 20.
About 20, yeah, about 20.
About 20. It, it depends, I mean, year to year it's different, so...
Every weekend, four weeks.
Oh, it's jumping on me. These are the tourism-related expenditures. These are the top five ways that we spend money using tourism-related expenditures. In the coming year, you'll see that emergency medical services is number one. I want to make sure that, that, that folks understand, these are not EMS services year round. These are specific times that we have increased demand because of the tourism in our community. It's the same with the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office ramps up activity on the Outer Banks as the, the traffic and the tourists increase our population. Historic Boat Museum, that is a one-time expenditure that we're going to make. That is part of it, some of it was funded in the past year as well. Lifeguard Services is number four. Once again, another public safety use that we have. So whenever people talk about how we use occupancy tax for public safety, I think it's important to recognize that a large expenditure that is for the lifeguard services that, as Commissioner Beaumont pointed out, we're, we're very proud of in our community that they are able to provide that service and, and hopefully they do tie that with having no loss of life on our beach again this year. And then the final thing, you see there's professional services, that $125,000 spend is basically money that we are setting aside because of the litigation that you've heard tonight. So those are funds that we are budgeting for extra legal expenses.
One other question relative to that, is, is there a way of capturing or recapturing legal expenses paid? Because we've gone down the lawsuit path before and have spent, not necessarily in this case, but which many would consider to be frivolous.
Typically, only if, if a party is able to show that, that the litigation is frivolous or filed for an improper purpose.
Okay.
I think certainly we will be looking at every opportunity. If, if we see that they should be paying the county back its attorney fees, that we will seek that from the court.
And I, and I think part of the reason that question arises is we've had multiple engagements, it's about every two years, I think it coincides with the commissioner election, about how...
Stop, I'm on a roll.
And so we've attempted to answer those questions. I, I just want to be sensitive to, again, being good stewards with the tax dollars that were provided.
And I'll just state, a couple of recent lawsuits where we were filing motions preparing to seek attorney fees and other sanctions, the parties dismissed our lawsuit before we could get to the courtroom, which, I mean, ultimately dismissal is what we wanted anyway.
Here is the schedule for the adoption of the, the TDA budget. As you'll see, it follows the same schedule we presented tonight. We would have, we'll have a public hearing on June 3rd and it has to be adopted prior to July 1st with an effective date of July 1st. You could adopt it at either one of the two meetings in June or at a special meeting. The budget is available in the county manager's office and once again will be available Wednesday on the county website.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. County Manager. Any further questions?
I gave him a motion.
He is the county, he is, he's, yeah, sort of is, maybe, I don't know. It's kind of a weird place.
Got to work on the mustache.
Right. There'll be no more of those. All right. Next, next agenda item is budget amendments for the Tourism Development Authority. Do we have anything? Let's see here. Where am I at? Can't pull my, can you pull it up? Could get through to the...
Budget amendments.
Seems like we had something in here, did we not?
$100,000 or something.
Right. I'm trying to find it, still going pages.
I'm pulling it up, my internet went down on the computer.
143?
Budget amendments for...
This thing keeps... Yeah, I'm having this, yes, I'm having the same problem.
Mine just changed our password.
It's, it just blew through.
Did it save payment on it?
Yeah, it just skipped all the way back to the top again, so... Okay. Do you have it in front of you, Miss Kitty? Well, would you like to make a motion since I don't have it in front of me?
One of them is an expense to occupancy tax promotion, credit for budgets to cover additional advertising, and that's $11,000. And then the next is to increase our defense because of the lawsuit, $100,000. I make a motion to approve.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, it carries unanimously. Can I get a motion to adjourn the special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, at this time, I'll open the special meeting of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewers District Board, and we have the presentation of their budget as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Etheridge, for the help on the budget amendments.
Thank you.
Technical difficulties.
Note to self.
Got Kitty on side.
This is for the budget for the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District. Specifically, this is the water and sewer portion of the Coastland Development. It's a little unique situation that we have here. We also have a Southern Outer Banks water dish, or water service, which is separate from this, which is in the, the first budget that I presented to you tonight. You'll see that the operating revenue on the water and sewer side, the operating expenses, and then this particular service actually has a property tax, an ad valorem tax of, on top of it, as well as the fees for the water and sewer. So it's a little different that way. On the operations side, these are some of the major things that we're working on in the next year. This is, was a recommendation on the development fee study that we had, and I just wanted to, to put this in front of you so you could see it. I have reached out to the folks who still own developable properties in this project because this is a considerable increase from what the fee currently is. Because there's only a handful of folks who have developable property in the Ocean Sands community still, I reached out to them to see if they would like to have input on that. I haven't heard back in regards to that. We have to provide a notice of 30 days to Coastland Corporation, according to the settlement agreement. I'm prepared to move forward with that notification if this is an issue that the board would like to take up at the second meeting in June or that you could make effective actually July 1st with the adoption of the budget. But basically, it's an increase of the development fee. I believe it's like $250,000 and it would go to basically $5,900. That's why I reached, because that is such a large change compared to the other ones. I did reach out to them just, because I, I felt like that was the right thing to do. I have not heard back yet. They can continue to reach out, I mean, we could still have that, but I could go ahead and send the notice of, that we're looking at changing that and, and hopefully they would get back in contact with our office.
So if they get back with us and say they want to keep it at 250, would... So if they get back with us and say they want to keep it at 250, what, does that change?
You know, I think that the issue in Ocean Sands is that it's very different from the other utilities that we have because of the fact that it is basically built out other than a couple of locations. The, you also have a different arrangement there because you have a property tax that is being paid by the folks who own this developable property, as well as the other property owners every year to help offset some of the cost for capital. So there's some conversation, I think, that is a little unique to this as opposed to some of the other utilities that we have in the county.
Okay. Okay. And we need to set a date for this one. Did you not, or you're going...
No, it'll actually follow the exact same schedule, so...
You've seen that slide before?
Yes.
Have. We're presenting tonight, June 3, for the public hearing with an effective date of July 1.
Okay.
Once again, it's available in the county manager's office, and on Wednesday it'll be available on the county website.
All right. Right, thank you. Okay. Any further discussion on this item? Can we have a motion to adjourn the special meeting of Ocean Sands Water and Sewer?
We have, no.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. At this time, I'll reconvene the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, and the next agenda is going into closed session. And I'll move us into closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A3 to consult with the county attorney and to preserve the attorney-client privilege in matters entitled Lieutenant v. Currituck County and Costanzo, Corolla Civic Association at AL versus Currituck County at AL. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.